Yeah, National Guard's first. All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call to order the regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting. It's the fifteenth of February. The first order, or first item rather, is call order and roll call?
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
The next item is pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is item number three, special order of the day and announcements. Three A is a proclamation in recognition and appreciation of the men and women serving in the Wisconsin Army National Guard, Unit 1158 Transportation Company. I don't think we have anyone here representing the National Guard unit, but if so, please step forward and Vice President Levy will read the proclamation.
Seeing no one, City of Beloit, Wisconsin, official proclamation in recognition and appreciation of the men and women serving in the Wisconsin Army National Guard, 1158 Transportation Company. Whereas the Wisconsin Army National Guard has completed a vital and important mission in Iraq, and whereas the Guard's Thirty-Second Infantry Brigade was tasked with a variety of missions including base administration and defense, area security, security support, Guard Forces operations, transferring detainees, and training Iraqi correctional officers, and whereas the Thirty-Second recently returned to Wisconsin after serving since February first, two thousand nine, and whereas the 1158 Transportation Company, based in Beloit and also deployed at the same time in Iraq, played a critical support role in the successful mission of the Wisconsin Army National Guard Thirty-Second Infantry Brigade. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beloit does hereby show its appreciation on behalf of all city residents for their dedication and bravery of the Wisconsin Army National Guard, especially the 1158 Transportation Company, and declares February sixteenth, twenty-ten, as Wisconsin Army National Guard, 1158 Transportation Company Day in the City of Beloit, presented this fifteenth day of February, twenty-ten, James E. Van de Bogart, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Three B is a proclamation celebrating the fifth annual Beloit International Film Festival. Again, I don't know if there's anyone here from the film festival who can accept the proclamation. I know that several of our councilors are volunteering at the festival, but Mr. Levy?
Thank you. City of Beloit, Wisconsin, official proclamation celebrating the fifth annual Beloit International Film Festival. Whereas the Beloit International Film Festival is marking its fifth year with another exciting festival scheduled for February eighteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-ten, enhancing its offerings by including three days of screenings and lectures at Beloit College and expanding its film screening venues to include locations throughout Beloit. And whereas the Beloit International Film Festival will attract thousands of visitors and scores of filmmakers to our community, filling restaurants and hotels and retail establishments, and whereas the Beloit International Film Festival and its five hundred volunteers has brought great pride to this community with a four-day celebration of creativity and cooperation. And whereas the Beloit International Film Festival with its title sponsor, the Hendrix Group, the visionary patronage of Diane Hendrix, the support of Beloit College and the sponsorship of Vision Beloit, and many others, has attracted support from hundreds of businesses throughout the state line area. And whereas honorary Chairman Gray Lamberson and other distinguished members of the independent film community have been inspired to join us and participate in their special programs, and whereas ingenious and talented citizens have opened their homes for a series of cinema a la carte fundraising dinners in order to provide grants for emerging filmmakers. Now therefore, the Beloit City Council is pleased to declare the week of February eighteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-ten, BIF week in Beloit and encourages all citizens to attend and support this exciting festival presented this fifteenth day of February, twenty-ten, James V. Van de Bogart, City Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levy. The next item is three C. It's the community report by City Manager Arf. We, those of you who follow council activities, will recall that many times we have it later in the agenda, but I think this evening, Mr. Arf doesn't want to compete with Apollo Ono and with Lindsey Vaughn and with any of the other Olympic events going on, so he wants to get this out of the way right away. So, Mr. Arf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, more people at home might see it who were early in the, early on the agenda and an early part of the program. But as councilors aware, I think the community as well, each year we do better prepare and add to the report to the community.
Me too.
It goes through some of the highlights for the prior year and then talks about some of the things that are coming up in this case for twenty-ten. We want to start again talking about the urban renaissance of the modern city of Beloit. Councilors will recall, we spent a lot of time this year working on and solidifying our commitment to sustainability, the strategic plans again being poured.
Thank you.
And obviously, when we talk about sustainability, we're talking about decisions based upon quality and value, just not cost. We're looking at doing things that enhance and protect both the built natural environment and things and decisions that will benefit both current and future generations. So when we look at facilities, we look at public infrastructure, we're looking at things that have a long projected lifespan. And again, that's been reiterated and reinforced in the city's strategic plan. I'm not going to read through the city's vision and mission statements, and certainly councilors are familiar with those, but once again, you'll see our very, very strong commitment to a sustainable decision-making process and sustainable goals. And those are reflected again in the five key goals that we rely on to implement the mission that's included in the strategic plan. The first one is an echo municipality focused on sustainable stewardship of the city's resources and facilities. Continue our competitive and sustainable economic development, attempting to improve workforce development, which of course is job creation, as well as improve the economic base of the city. Proactively partner with businesses and individuals to promote public health, safety, and welfare. Apply good sustainable practices to our historic preservation, community revitalization, and successful new development. And finally, of course, communicate and partner with other jurisdictions and organizations to coordinate an effective and efficient service delivery. And we've continued to build a relationship with our neighbors, not only in town government, but also in Rock County and the city of Janesville. Now this year, we've spent a lot of time, put a lot of initiative in working together with our partners on the Rock Five Point O Economic Development Initiative, and we'll be continuing with that trend. I want to quickly cover some of the key public facilities, infrastructure upgrades, and economic development opportunities that occurred in the city in two thousand nine. And again, a lot of this will be familiar, but I think it's important to highlight and reiterate the community's accomplishments. Let's start with the public facilities. The first thing, of course, was the library. You'll all recall the dedication and ribbon cutting last April. It doesn't seem possible, that's been almost a year now that the new library has been in place. So far, I think it's met and exceeded all of our expectations. Participation levels jumped dramatically as soon as the door was open, and quite frankly, they've stayed high, and we're very excited about that, and hopefully that will continue. Turtle Island redevelopment was completed. The contractor worked through the winter, got that ready for the spring, and we actually had a June dedication, which was great because the water feature was one of the most significant components of the new Discovery and Exploration Park, and the kids just walked to it. The park again has, continues to serve as a major anchor or attraction to the Riverside Park development, and we get big crowds there all summer long and even off-season. The South Riverside Park Promenade was built last year. We've removed the Ace Hardware Building, did a small expansion to the parking lot, expansion to the big lawn, built the promenade, added all the landscaping and tree planting. They really finished off, and as we like to say, this was in essence substantial completion of Riverside Park because now the basic infrastructure is in place from Riverside to Henry Avenue. And of course, there are a few more improvements scheduled in the park related to other projects, and there likely will be improvements from time to time internally to the park as well as we continue to upgrade the facility. The new bus transfer facility is almost complete. You can see the photograph on the bottom right side, and we should have gone out, I guess, and updated a picture this week, but the building is certainly ninety-plus percent complete now. We're looking to have a dedication and ribbon cutting right at the end of March, and then that facility will be operational. This was part of the project we're going to talk a little more about in a moment, to construct Water Street, to close and relocate a portion of Mill Street, and there's quite, there's a little bit of work left on that site that we'll be finishing up in twenty-ten. The other significant project, it's not a major public facility, but we were finally able to acquire the old, what we call the Bear property, which was the old Lerner salvage yard after a number of years of trying. This was a partnership. The city purchased the piece that's in Wisconsin. South Beloit purchased the property, or I should say, accepted the donation of the property, of the piece that's in South Beloit, Illinois. And of course, Bear Recycling Company, which owns it now, donated the property, plus they put up a substantial cash amount as well to help with the brownfield cleanup. This is being converted into a prairie preserve, which will become part of the permanent Turtle Creek Greenway, and of course, this piece of it will be near the downtown area. The brownfield cleanup was done in two thousand nine. Most of the soil cap has now been put in place, and of course, landscaping, parking lot completion is scheduled for this spring. The project was essentially shut down for the winter, but it should be done this spring. We hope to have a dedication ceremony sometime in early summer. Some public infrastructure projects that were done this past year, the Gateway Boulevard Extension Project, certainly the biggest. This was a major infrastructure investment. Funding for this project came from federal and state grants, plus revenue increment from the TIP district to cover the cost of the improvement. And as you can see from the map, once it's completed, it will extend Gateway Boulevard from its current termination point near the residential complexes that are located in the business park. Take it all the way north to Millington Road, basically follow the Millington Road right away up to Hart Road, and of course, we've made improvements to the interchange as a part of that project as well. Once again, that'll probably be mid-two thousand ten before that's completed. And obviously, it will enhance the commercial potential of this entire area, including the existing Gateway Business Park, which is located to the south of the new roadway extension, provides improved interchange access on I forty-three, and provides a modern industrial street to access the new Cary campus, which was completed and dedicated last year. We also reconstructed Harvey Street last year in the Merrill neighborhood. This project not only serves the neighborhood, but also the IPM Foods business, which is a startup, is actually a new business, and they purchased the old Adams Corn Coral Building and spent a significant amount of money, made some pretty, pretty significant improvements to the interior of the building, have some commitments from them to rework the exterior, and I don't think they've quite reached the point yet where they can do that. Also had quite a bit of street reconstruction and resurfacing last year. I'm not going to read all these. These are the lists of the ones that were done. The second bullet point is Cranston Road from the Collingswood Drive area to Chopir. The rest of it to Prairie is on the schedule for this season. And the last bullet point you'll see is the I ninety industrial park streets on the east side of Cranston. And most of that was done this year. We did a process where we ground and broke up the existing concrete bases and essentially created a new base course and then paved asphalt on top of it. Was quite a bit less expensive and a lot faster than trying to replace all the concrete pavement that was cracked up, and so we'll see how that lasts. And these other streets were done citywide, all that resurfacing was completed in two thousand and nine. Obviously, the economy was a factor all year, but there were a number of things that happened. The Cary campus, we did the ribbon cutting and grand opening and tour of the new facility this past summer. There's over two hundred thousand square feet in this building. It literally has changed the whole skyline of the city of Beloit and certainly has created a major new anchor, which we hope will have some overflow economic development impact in the Gateway Business Park area. And as you can see, it retained a lot of jobs that are here in the city of Beloit, and most of those jobs were scheduled to be relocated to the Milwaukee metropolitan area. We also brought two hundred and fifty new jobs into the Beloit area from other metropolitan regions as a result of this project. There's about forty-four million dollars was spent on it. This is the Hampton Inn and Suites. This is the famous hotel project at Cranston in Milwaukee that's setting out there. This was a new construction project that started this year. There's about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet and obviously would have a Hampton flag on it, and unfortunately, they are on hold awaiting financing. And as you know, in today's economy and marketplace, getting financing for any kind of project is difficult, and there's a lot of surplus capacity in the hotel industry. So even though we think this is a strong project at a great location, they've been having difficulty getting funding. We also have to mention the college's new science center. This is obviously an institutional building, not a commercial building, but has had a tremendous impact on the downtown area and we think on the college. And of course, very significant that they have a platinum LEEDs certification. They were hoping, I think they were going for silver originally, and as the project evolved and more and more green components and materials got used, when they had their final analysis done, they ended up having a platinum, which is the highest LEED certification that you can get from the Green Building Council. So that was another huge, huge asset for the, not only for the college, but for the community as a whole. And the, you know, the college obviously invested a lot of money in this facility. Frito-Lay also announced this year that they were putting new technology online, which would help retain jobs in Beloit, further solidify the Beloit location as one of the major manufacturing sites or locations for Frito-Lay Corporation, and they're investing over twenty-eight million dollars. All of this work is inside the footprint of the existing building, so there will be no building expansion. As I mentioned, it was a year of economic hardship. The city of Beloit certainly took our blows, along with everyone else, not only in the region, but nationwide. Just a few quick statistics to give you a flavor for the impact that the economy had on the city this past year. These are housing starts last year. As you can see, we issued a whopping four building permits, and about three of those were issued after mid-year. So we literally went to mid-year with one unit. The multifamily unit you see at the bottom was a fire, and the unit burned out. It was a ten-unit building, and they pulled permits to rebuild it. Went to twelve units, as councilor will recall, so we had a net gain there of two multifamily units in the city and four single-family. And a couple of years ago, those numbers at the bottom would have been near two hundred and fifty new residential units a year, and we were running in the forty to fifty range on single-family. So you can see the shutdown in the housing market has impacted the city significantly. And community development also sent this slide up for us to add this year. This is remodelings and alterations, and it's kind of interesting to look at the numbers. You can see the number of permits went up this year, and I don't know if that speaks to a trend or just a slight variance in the statistics, is obviously people are staying in their homes, they're not able to sell or relocate, and a lot of people are staying in their homes and doing building additions, finishing basements, et cetera. And you'll see a lot of that work as you travel around the city. But it's also interesting, if you look in the last column, the green column, the value of the work was down dramatically, less than half what it was the year before. So we did more work, but I don't know if people were doing it at less cost or doing smaller-scale projects. And of course, unfortunately, we have to visit the city's unemployment rate. I wish we didn't. At the end of December, we were still at sixteen percent. It's one of the highest single-form municipality unemployment rates that you're going to find in the, in the country. There are a few places in Michigan and elsewhere that have been hit harder by unemployment. A lot of this has to do with the auto industry, cutbacks, closure of the GM facility, cutbacks at the Chrysler facility in Belvedere, and just general weakness. We've had good reports again from our food service industries. Most of them are doing real well. As you saw, Frito added production capacity. Kettle completed all of their production lines this year, opened all the capacity they have in their facility. We understand Harmel's running at full boat, and so those things are encouraging, but the gray metal-oriented industries took a hard hit. Alcoa closed. We've had a number of cutbacks in a lot of our machine shops. Beloit was kind of known for especially machine tooling businesses that are located here. A lot of them are telling us they were down thirty to forty percent in two thousand nine. So they've taken major hits, and that's resulted in layoffs and, and cutbacks in work hours. A little bit about the budget. No big secret, we struggled with this. Many months went into putting together a final balanced budget document. We started out about two point six million dollars in the red in the general fund alone, cuts due to cuts in state shared revenue. We had reductions in other revenue sources due to the economy. Some increases in state fees, we'll talk about a little more in a moment. Employer healthcare cost was a big item last year. We, this is one of those years. Some years you catch a big increase, some years it's relatively stable, and this year happened to be one where it went up. We did resolve the deficit and did produce a balanced budget, and we did that through a series of spending reductions and revenue enhancements. The approved tax rate for two thousand nine payable in the ten tax bills that are paying now went up to eight, eighty-three. That was a seventy-five percent, or seventy-five cent increase in the rate, and that was due in part to increases in the levy to balance the budget and also in part to the fact that assessments were down somewhat last year, so that pushes the rate up higher. We also had a very, very successful round of negotiations with all the city's bargaining units and also worked with our non-represented employees and basically froze salaries for two years. There is no salary increases authorized for twenty-ten, and in twenty-eleven, the salary increase was pushed off until mid-December. So it'll be done at the end of the year. It'll be the two and a half percent that the employees gave up for twenty-ten, but it won't come into play for either of the next two fiscal years, and of course, it'll come online for twenty-twelve, and that will be synchronized with the next state budget cycle. And obviously, as I told, the employees and their bargaining units this past year, we have no idea what's going to happen in, in twenty-twelve. We're going to have a new governor. It's a whole new state budget cycle. We don't know how the legislature will be comprised, but whatever it is, we'll, we'll deal with it when we get there. And the savings from this program was significant. This was the single biggest item that made it possible to do that balanced budget. The savings in twenty-ten was about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and I think about four hundred and fifty of that was for the general fund, the rest of it for other utility funds as well. We also did the early retirement program. We had a number of people that accepted that, paid that out. Out of the two thousand nine budget, we'll be saving about ninety thousand a year in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, and going forward as a result of that. As you know, many of the positions were not filled, and some that were, were filled, were full-time positions were converted to part-time. So it did produce a significant permanent savings. We ended up cutting about one point five million out of the general fund budget and did that without closing any facilities or cutting back on any of our critical services. So our staffing levels, and basically in public works, police and fire, our three main-line service delivery departments are as they were prior to the beginning of the budget cycle. We did have to raise solid waste fees this year from eleven fifty to thirteen dollars a month. This was due to that increase in state fees we talked about, plus we had a significant loss of revenue for recyclables that, for which the market has essentially collapsed, although we're still recycling, but we're just not getting paid for the stuff. And of course, we went through our usual user fee exercise each year, and our capital budget, of course, was down dramatically from the year before, a decrease of about fourteen million dollars. And councilors are aware, we've cut about another million dollars out of that since the budget was done as part of the process of sizing our general obligation bond issue for next year, which pays for a portion of those improvements. So we're, we're going to do as small an issue as possible. This table just quickly summarizes the budget. Councilors, of course, have seen it before. I just wanted to quickly point out the general fund. As you can see, the increase was a whopping forty-two thousand dollars on a thirty-million-dollar budget, and up until a few weeks before the budget was adopted, when we were notified of some additional transportation aids, the number was actually lower than the year before. And of course, other account groups, funding groups are up or down based on expenditure needs for the year. Our total operating budget's up about three and a half percent, a little over. And of course, the total budget is down dramatically, and that's due primarily to the rollback in capital spending for the year, which was, I anticipated, of course, as we had some fairly large projects included in the two thousand nine program. So we did anticipate that the budget itself would be lower for twenty-ten. All right, quickly, twenty-ten, what's coming up? A lot of exciting things. Beloit will be here, and we'll be showing as good as we've, we've shown in past years. There will be festivals. Riverside Park will be activated. The downtown farmer's market will be going on, and of course, the Vision Center will be available. Got a lot of projects for twenty-ten. The carryovers, we talked about finishing Gateway. Quite a bit of work left on the Bear property. That'll be finished and all seeded with a prairie restoration mix. There'll be some tree planting, and of course, the Water Street construction, which includes the completion of the Riverwalk all the way to Sherlin Avenue and substantial landscaping along that additional park enhancement will also be completed next year, and the transit facility, as I mentioned, will be open actually in about a month. New construction projects, I'm not going to read all of these, but we have quite a bit of street construction for this year. The East Side Neighborhood, McKinley Reconstruction, and of course, the big Riverside Drive project, which will close most of Riverside Drive around mid-July, and it'll be closed probably till about Thanksgiving for the complete reconstruction of that roadway. And then Public Avenue from Pleasant to College will also be reconstructed this year. That's the street that's in front of the Vision Beloit facility. Street resurfacing projects, again, the intermittent resurfacings haven't all been selected yet. Staff intentionally waits until after the frost is out of the ground each spring, and that kind of tells us which streets we got to get into the resurfacing program that summer, and so we'll get that list together in the April-May timeframe. Usually those are bid in early July for late summer/fall construction. Several design projects that are going on, these are projects for construction in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve timeframe that we're doing engineering on now. Utility system improvements, these are actually on the agenda later this evening to approve the authorization at least to go into the market for bond financing for the three projects. The biggest one is the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, includes the sludge de-watering technology and odor control, the new well, well number fourteen, and the blending reservoir for the water utility and the stormwater settlement ponds. And there are funds in these utilities to cover that debt service cost. Park improvements, several recreation facility improvements are scheduled for the coming year. The, well, second phase, I guess, of the Horace White Park Historic Restoration Project will be undertaken, and we have a fairly significant shoreline restoration project that will include a portion of the east bank of the Rock River, and we've applied for another grant, that's grant-funded, of course, and we've applied for another grant to do even more shoreline work, and we're waiting for the results of that. Number of TIP improvements, the downtown facade program will continue. Upper-floor housing initiative will continue. The Fourth Street Parking Lot will be completely reconstructed this year. We'll be putting a new entrance into what we call the Third Street Parking Lot, which is the public parking lot on the Ironworks Campus to accommodate parking for those businesses. This will actually be closed early summer and will be closed for several months while it undergoes a complete reconstruction process. This is a small culvert project on Town Hill Road and Eagles Ridge Park. Phase one equipment installation will take place. And the industrial park concrete streets, this is in the I ninety industrial park, those, a number of those will also be done again this year. This is just a quick look at some of the downtown facade renovations that were done last year. There's at least one and possibly up to three more projects that'll be done in twenty-ten. The Sustainability Energy Initiative Program will be continuing. We just got noticed last week that our block grant funding was approved, and we'll be preparing an RFP to select a consultant to do some facility studies to look at alternative heating/cooling options primarily for the city hall. This is a list of properties. This is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This is another federal grant program to help cities buy up, remodel and/or demolish if the units are beyond redemption, rehab, or repossess properties in the community. As you can see, we've already bought three for rehab and two there for demolition. We've got six more properties under the plan that we'll be acquiring. Most of those will be rehabs. Neighborhood Housing Services, which is our partner, they've purchased two foreclosed properties, and they'll do those for rehab and resale. This program's a hundred percent federally funded. We get to keep the proceeds of the sales, so we hope to roll that money into a fund and do, and buy up and do more foreclosed. hope to roll that money into a fund and do, and buy up and do more foreclosed properties with it. Finally, the Public Housing Remodeling and Energy Efficiency Project has actually been underway now for many, many months, but you haven't seen any work. We think we have the full consulting team in place and the engineer or the architect is working on building plans and we'd hope to get out the bid on components and elements of this work very early in the spring so that you'll start to actually see some of the public housing upgrades taking place in 2010. And that kind of gives you a good overview of some of the major accomplishments and challenges that the city faced in 2009 and a look at what we've got scheduled for 2010. If councilors have any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time. Otherwise, thank you all for your attention.
All right, thank you, City Manager Art. Are there any questions councilors might have? Thank you. Item three D is a notice to the public regarding polling place changes for tomorrow's primary election. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, because we do anticipate a very low turnout for tomorrow's primary, the council authorized combining our ten polling places into two. Some people may not know where it is that they should go to vote tomorrow, so we encourage anyone who has a question to call the City Clerk's Office tomorrow, anytime between 6:30 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at 364-6680 and we will help you, direct you to your correct polling place for tomorrow only. After this, everyone will go back to their normal polling places.
And basically, it's Central Christian Church and Gaston School.
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number four is public hearings. This evening, we have two. Public hearing four A is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1934 Crane Avenue from temporary R1B Single Family Resident District to permanent R1B Single Family Resident District. This is before the council for a first reading with a request that the rules be suspended and we proceed to action on the merits. It was before the Plan Commission with a recommendation for approval four zero. Ms. Christensen, can you give us the staff report, please?
On September 21st, 2009, City Council annexed the property located at 1934 Crane Avenue into the city of Beloit. The ordinance approving that annexation assigned a temporary zoning district classification of R1B Single Family Residential District. After the property is attached to the city, then Plan Commission must initiate the permanent zoning. That has been done. The proposed permanent zoning classification is R1B Single Family Residential District. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at its last meeting and did recommend approval of that zoning classification four zero.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1934 Crane Avenue from temporary R1B Single Family Residential District to permanent R1B Single Family Residential District. Does anyone wish to appear and be heard on that issue? If so, please step forward. All right, a second call. Does anyone wish to speak on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1934 Crane Avenue from temporary R1B Single Family Residential District to permanent R1B Single Family Residential District? Again, and lastly, does anyone wish to appear and speak on an ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1934 Crane Avenue from temporary R1B to permanent R1B Single Family Resident? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits. Mr. Forrest?
Second.
And Mr. Haynes, any further counselor comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, is there a motion to approve the underlying proposed ordinance in four A?
Approve four A.
Mr. Noonan, Mr. Haynes, again, counselor questions or discussion? And I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, motion carries seven zero. Public hearing four B is a, on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow sale, possession and consumption of alcohol in a PLI, Public Lands and Institutions District for the property located at 656 Pleasant Street, also known as the Angel Museum. This has been before the Plan Commission with a recommendation for approval four zero. And Ms. Christensen, can you give us the staff report, please?
This application for the conditional use is to allow the Angel Museum to sell alcohol in conjunction with fundraisers and special events only and this would allow the events to be held inside or outside of the existing building. At the Plan Commission meeting, Ruth did, and Ruth Carlson did, on behalf of the Angel Museum, did indicate that their immediate plans are really to use the inside of the building and then the outdoor patio area only. This conditional use would allow, you know, use of the entire facility and some of the conditions relate to that. Plan Commission did, did review this and hold a public hearing and did recommend approval subject to the conditions which are listed in the resolution, which is included in your packet, which is that the conditional use permit authorizes the sale, possession and/or consumption of alcohol in conjunction with special events on the property located at 656 Pleasant Street in the city of Beloit, Wisconsin. The areas where alcohol may be permitted include the interior of the building and outside of the building within the legal boundaries of the property, excluding the portion of the property starting 10 feet east of the bicycle and pedestrian path west to the Rock River and running the length of the property. The appropriate alcohol license must be obtained through the City Clerk's Office prior to an event featuring the sale, possession and/or consumption of alcohol. Special events that are proposed outside of the building require the submittal of a site plan to planning staff showing the location of the outdoor event, including the required fencing. The approved site plan shall be forwarded to the City Clerk's Office to supplement the alcohol license application. Temporary fencing is required for all outdoor events featuring the use of alcohol except for those events on the patio directly south of the building. The temporary fence must delineate the area in which alcohol is permitted and it must restrict access to that area of the property for individuals who are under the legal drinking age. Parking lot shall only be used for the outdoor sale, possession and/or consumption of alcohol for large-scale special events where the additional space is needed beyond the patio and open green space areas on the south side of the building. And the capacity limitations must be maintained during all special events and building access for emergency purposes must not be hindered. And then the final condition is your standard condition that any major changes to the adopted conditions should come back through this public process and staff may approve minor changes administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval four zero.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'll open the public hearing on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol in a Public Lands and Institutions District for the property located at 656 Pleasant Street. Does anyone wish to appear and be heard on that conditional use permit? If so, please step forward. Again, does anyone wish to speak on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol in the Public Lands and Institutions District at 656 Pleasant Street? And lastly, does anyone wish to appear and speak on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol in a Public Lands and Institutions District for property located at 656 Pleasant Street? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve four B. Mr. Dench, Ms. Johns, additional counselor comments or questions? Ms. Forrest?
If I could ask for clarification, the staff originally recommended that fencing would be required in all areas for outdoor alcohol usage and I see the Plan Commission voted to modify the staff recommendation and hence the patio hasn't been included. Could you describe their rationale for why they've, they've decided not to have fencing for the patio area?
Because of how the patio operates, that it's further down and surrounded pretty completely except two access points. They felt the temporary fencing really wouldn't add anything and those two areas, those two access points would be required, I mean, they would have to deal with people coming down there. Because it's a ticketed event, the way Ruth explained it, that all their events would be ticketed, they would be collecting tickets for people coming down there anyway and so they would be monitoring those access points. So they essentially removed the temporary fencing requirement for the patio area.
Is it foreseeable, though, that the ticketing could occur inside the building and then trickle out into the patio? I'm concerned about those access points, especially the one that's right there on the bike path.
They would still be required to deal with that in terms of alcohol. I mean, that would be a requirement of their liquor license, whether you require fencing or not, they are still obligated to, to control, you know, the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol within their area.
But do they have a, a concrete formalized plan of how to control those access points or no?
They didn't present that at Plan Commission, but Plan Commission was essentially, felt that the temporary fencing was not needed in that case.
Okay, but they would have to when they took out the permit? They would have to identify what their plan was for controlling access?
They wouldn't do that as part of, we just have a site plan review requirement. I'm assuming when they go for their alcohol, I don't know what they do in relation to the alcohol license. That is through the clerk's office, so I'm not certain.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Only that we have no input into how they would control that. They would just apply for the permit and if it is approved by the police department, then we approve it.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right, any additional other comments or questions of Ms. Christensen or discussion by counsel?
What would be the protocol for requesting that we modify the original motion that's been made? I would like to see fencing included.
I think if you wanted to make a motion to amend, that would be in order and then if there's a second, we can have discussion.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend that the access points be fenced on the patio in addition to the other fencing requirements.
All right, is there a second to Ms. Forrest's motion? Is there a second to Ms. Forrest's motion? Is there a second to Ms. Forrest's motion? There appearing no second, the, the motion to amendment fails. Are there any additional amendments or discussion on the original motion? I'll call a question. All in favor of the original motion to approve four B, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries seven zero. Item number five is citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for individuals to address the council on issues that either will come before us tonight or may come before us. I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and while I won't cut you off in mid-sentence, I would ask that you be respectful of other individuals' time who may wish to address us. This evening, I have only one citizens' participation sign-up sheet from Mr. Brunton. If he's here, please step forward.
My name is Rick Brunton. I reside on Euclid Avenue in Beloit. Mr. President, members of the City Council, City Manager Art, Madam Clerk, it was some 40 years ago that a city council, much like this city council, came to a decision that once was made could not be reversed. That was the decision to build the then Beloit Plaza. Now, those councilors that voted in the affirmative were confident, just as you are, beyond any reasonable doubt that they had made the correct decision. However, in hindsight, there were several mistakes that were made in that decision. The mall or then the plaza was built far enough away from the downtown area to literally choke off the existing downtown businesses, yet not close enough to the regional access centers to make the mall and the plaza a regional success. Thus, while the cities of Janesville and Cherry Valley took a more complete look at the problem, they built malls that had the regional success in that they were accessed by shoppers that lived outside of those respective cities, while the Beloit Plaza, which then became the Beloit Mall, was dependent solely upon Beloit shoppers. After a short period of years, the mall became the responsibility of the Beloit taxpayers and had it not been for the generosity of Ken and Diane Hendricks, that mall would now be a deteriorating structure with an ugly hardtop parking lot area on a hilltop that was once graced by 100-year-old elm trees, oak trees and a nine-hole golf course. While the trees that once graced that hillside are gone, never to return, that council was as confident as this council as the correct decision had been made. This pertains to the decision of parking lots on Riverside Park. Due to the narrow decision of this council, the long-term interests of the citizens of Beloit, after all, it is us citizens who own that park and the history of city councils to make mistakes, I believe a revisiting of this issue is in the best interest of the Beloit community. Yet I am troubled by a greater threat to the long-term success of the city of Beloit. It is the threat of apathy on the part of its citizens. Apathy, that great destroyer of individuals that has realized when one individual believes and comes to the agreement in their own mind that their voice no longer matters, that they no longer possess the ability to make a difference in their own lives, in their community or in their country. Comments of leadership recently quoted in the Beloit Daily News strike a remarkable likeness to comments that were made after the decision to close the Beloit Health Center. While citizens were allowed to voice their objections to the decision, it was very clear from the onset that leadership had no interest in hearing, let alone considering their voices. It is this relationship of leadership to its constituents that breeds the apathy that destroys the citizens' willingness to participate in decisions that are made and allow their voice to be heard, whether before or after the fact. Tonight, I appeal to one single city counselor to stand up and make a decision to reverse the insolence that this leadership and this body has shown to the citizens of Beloit and allow this issue to be revisited. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brunton. Any additional individuals wish to address the council this evening? I'll close the public hearing of citizens' participation and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening consists of items A through D. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. First of all, do any individuals wish, councilors wish, an item removed from the consent agenda? Ms. Forrest?
I'd like to request that six B is in Boy. Be removed, please.
Very well. The consent agenda then consists of items A through D with the exception of B as in Boy. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Johns?
Second.
Mr. Levy? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries seven zero. Item number six B is a resolution authorizing the city of Beloit to apply for and enter into a grant agreement for a threat assessment analysis. Mr. Jacobs, can you explain what this is to us, perhaps?
The request is to enter into an agreement for a grant, is to request a grant only for a threat assessment analysis of crime in Beloit. While we do analysis in Beloit for crime, generally, we don't have the expertise and the time to go into depth, as I think that we should do in the community. What I'm looking for is a professional to come in into our community, into our police department and use the data that we have in the department to identify the eight percent of criminals that create the most crime in our community. I'd also like to know where they're, where they're doing it and when they're doing it. With that information, I would be able to direct our resources that the community gives us better over the next five years or so. This person also would pass on information that they know about analyzing crime and hopefully would be able to bring our level of experience with that work up in the department.
All right, questions of Chief Jacobs?
I have several questions.
Mr. Forrest.
I guess, could you help me understand why this isn't currently being done in the department? Why we're not reviewing reports on a regular basis to look for commonalities in terms of criminals that we're seeing currently? I thought, I assume that would already be done internally.
Yes, it is done internally. We do that, we've been doing it for quite a while.
How would this funding be used differently?
We would do it better than what we do now. In the past several years, I've been the crime analyst and I don't have the time right now to dig into the information that we have, the data that's in our two main databases, our CAD system and our law enforcement records management system. An analyst has the expertise to take our information and combine it with outside data from other agencies to create the information that we need to, to do our resources, to work with our resources better. So we have been doing it, but I want to do it better.
Can I ask what, what the rationale is for deciding to bring in an outside person versus training our own staff?
I intend to train our own staff. Training takes several years to get somebody up to speed to do crime, be a crime analyst. It does take a little extra money that I have to get in the budget and what I think the community needs now is just a little push so that I can use the resources that we have better. I'd like to see us focus a little bit more on specific crimes in the community, crimes, street crimes that affect the community better or, or worse than what we have now. As an example, our drug and gang unit may have up to 150 parcels that they're looking at for criminal activity at any one time. So how do they decide which ones to direct their, their efforts at? And a- So how do they decide which ones to direct their efforts at? And a crime analyst would help us with that.
And then my last question would be, I know you are applying for the RFP to State Line Community Foundation, and what is your plan if that funding is not secured?
I would either try another source, or I would look internally to see if we're able to fund that position or the research over a period of time. The reason why I picked the State Line Community Foundation is because I had a conversation with some of the people associated with it, and there appeared that there was an opportunity to make the application. There certainly isn't any guarantee, and I don't expect a guarantee from an organization like that, but I'd like to give it a try.
And I have one other question, just to make very clear that this would not be used to conduct any profiling in any way?
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Levy? One question that I have, what, where's the expert coming from? What kind of background does he or she have?
Well, the expert I have in mind has many years of experience as an analyst through the Wisconsin Air National Guard. And this person has helped with the state, with the Safe Streets Task Force in Beloit over the last several years. So he is familiar with Beloit. As a matter of fact, he lives in the area.
I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to draw the connection, and nothing against the National Guard, but I'm trying to see how that fits in with what the police does. I mean, I
I understand. I might be, I might be able to
I'm still trying to confuse, that's why I'm confused, that it seems like there's two different entities there. We're bringing someone from here to do this, and do they have the expertise to do, to give you the information that we're looking for, versus going out there to see if we have an expert in the field of what we're looking for? I don't know if that's a confusing statement or question, or
No, that's fine, and it does seem a little bit unusual, but it isn't. If you would think that the Safe Streets Task Force used an analyst from the National Guard to help them locate criminals in our area, it seems to make sense that we can do the same. This person has the experience in using the databases that we don't have, all the digital information that we have on crime and criminals in Beloit, and they're able to organize it and give it back to us in a way that we can use it as a police department. Now, I can do some of that. I can make basic charts and basic maps and put dots on maps, but I can't do it as well as an analyst who will actually be able to draw correlations between different types of crimes and times, and maybe use databases that are outside our police department. Probation and parole is another one. We have a lot of, as any community has, a lot of folks on probation and parole who do have a higher propensity to be involved with criminal activity. And that information would also help us direct our resources.
Okay. And then the big concern that I had is kind of what Council DeForest had touched on, but if you assure me that this is not a way of profiling, then I guess I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I know to some extent, we want to identify the people that's committing the most of the crimes in the city, and I believe to some extent, we're doing that now. But I also don't want it to be used as a profiling base, and that's when I guess I look to the attorney, Assistant City Attorney, to make sure that this is, I mean, this is, okay, I'm sure it's legal, but I just, it's real fine, real fine. There's just a couple
I understand your concern. I can assure you that we won't use it for profiling. As you know, the Beloit Police Department is CIA-accredited and for many, many years, and that was one of our standards to be accredited, is to have a profiling policy. We were one of the first departments in the state of Wisconsin to have an anti-profiling policy, and we abide by it and follow it.
Okay. And just to follow up, that if we're doing it now, and we're doing it well now, and we want to do it a little bit better than what we're doing it now, could we not use the grant funding that we get to help our own department versus bringing in an outsider? It's just a question. If we're talking about doing something better, and we get money to do it, could we not funnel that through our system, our people, who's already doing this, to help them do it better?
The council did authorize the application for a grant last year that we received for training for a crime analyst, and I'm currently training one of our employees to do that. But as I said, it takes a while to get that person trained. And if I can get somebody in, a Beloit-er in here to help us and push-start this process, I think we can get a year or two ahead of where I think we should be three years from now. So, and it's just, it's a temporary, a temporary grant. It isn't a permanent position.
And just a last question, if we were to get this grant and you were to get this person, when would we be able to see the results of this person's position, or the outcome of what they found? Did it help? Did it hurt? How soon do you think we could see something?
I would hope of six months, I would start to get some information back. I don't know how long analyzing our data would take.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. DeForest, an additional question?
I just wanted to check to see if you've communicated with other jurisdictions. You alluded to probation and parole. Have you contacted them to see about the feasibility of accessing their records?
No, I leave that up to the analyst.
This would be an outside contractor that we would leave that up to?
Be a temporary, be as close I could say, would be a temporary seasonal employee.
Okay. And I'm, certainly, you're more of an expert in this. You don't think that we would need to communicate with those jurisdictions as an entity, the city of Beloit Police Department?
Yes, yes, we would. This person would be acting on our behalf.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve six B? Mr. Noonam and Ms. Johns, any further councillor comments or questions? I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven is ordinances. There are none this evening. Item number eight is appointments, and there are none this evening as well. Item number nine is councillor activities and upcoming events. Ms. DeForest, could you start us off this evening?
Certainly. I would like to thank those residents that have contacted me about their concern about particularly the creation of the parking lot at the north end of Riverside Park. And certainly, this body has made a decision which I will respect, but I would just ask again that councillors would take to heart that residents have spoken quite loudly about their concern, that we consider re-examining it, and would ask that that consideration be given to our residents out of respect to them. I would like to say that I am absolutely ecstatic about BIF and pleased to be able to volunteer again this year. I will be able to host an event that's taking place at La Casa Grande on Friday night, very late, so for you night owls like me, it'll be the late-night movie at La Casa Grande. So I hope you can come out to support film in our community in this fantastic event, and I wanted to thank all of the organizers, sponsors, and the many volunteers. I, it amazes me every year that I volunteer, the number of people that it brings from outside our community into our community, and the praise that I hear them give when they come into our community. For some, it's been many years that they've revisited Beloit, and they're so impressed with the improvements we made, and it just makes me so proud to be a Beloit-er and hear positive comments from folks that are coming in from the outside to visit our great city. So, thank you, BIF, for helping to make that happen.
Mr. Dench?
Nothing to me.
Mr. Levy?
Nothing.
And Mr. Haynes?
Nothing.
Ms. Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Going right along with the arts in Beloit. This past weekend, Beloit Memorial Theater Department hosted faculty folies. We had an amazing group of talented faculty at Beloit Memorial and within the school district. These weren't the arts teachers and the music teachers and the theater teachers. These were the math and science, English teachers. Fabulous skills, and they put on a talent show basically Friday and Saturday night for Beloit Memorial Theater Department for Endeavor to Scotland, and we raised well over twenty-three hundred dollars, so I just want to thank all of them. It was a really great show. And then, of course, the Little Red Neon has been moved out onto the ice in the lagoon. And the person that guesses the closest date and time the car falls through the ice will win two thousand dollars, and I just wanted to mention, this is your last week to get tickets. Time is running out, so please call six oh eight four three six three six five five to get your tickets. Monday, the twenty-second, is the very last day, and we have raised about half of our eighty-seven thousand dollar goal. So, thank you.
Mr. Noonam?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. First, I'd like to thank those that did come forward and worked on the plans for the Riverside redevelopment. Everyone certainly knows that folks had very good intentions with their plans. Sometimes, there's unintended consequences, though, and I think that citizens have spoken very loudly. There was a request for new arguments. The best new argument that I've heard in the last two weeks was the point that there may be damage to more trees in the park because of the co-mingling of the tree root systems, and we'd hoped to have an expert here tonight. Unfortunately, they couldn't make them. I also see that there are many citizens in the audience tonight, and I was hoping that maybe if you were here for that issue, if you were opposed to the parking lots, if you could please stand to be recognized.
Mr. Noonam, you have the floor to talk about councillor upcoming activities and events. You do not have the floor to solicit support for a vote that was taken a month ago. Please combine your remarks to the scope that's available to you at this point. We've plowed this field a number of times. We're done plowing it, sir.
I guess that that'll end it.
Thank you.
The president is running a meeting, and
Do you have, Mr. Noonam, additional councillor activities and upcoming events that you'd like to speak to?
I certainly would encourage all citizens to participate in BIF this weekend. It's one of our premier events throughout the city. It's fantastic. It brings in so many people from outside the community, and it's a great opportunity for all of us here in the city to show off our wonderful community and all the positive things that are happening in the city of Beloit, which I'm very proud of. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Noonam. I also would encourage individuals to participate in BIF. It is an outstanding opportunity for us to not only see wonderful films, but to get out and shake off a little bit of cabin fever that we might have. I'm also able to participate as Ms. DeForest, as a volunteer, at a couple of the events, and I'm looking forward to doing so. Reference has been made to citizens' participation and voting on issues that we dealt with approximately a month ago. I would refer individuals, if they have questions, to check with Mr. Arft in his office. I also have available here for distribution, if people want them, the latest email that was sent out showing the reduction in size of the north parking lot from twenty-some spaces down to much less than that. Folks, we have a four-three split on the council. It's going to remain four-three. That's the policy of the city. And if we continue to pursue this, all we do is divide our community. That's the way it is. Thank you. Item number ten is city manager's presentation. There is none this evening. Item number eleven is reports from boards and city officers. Eleven A is a resolution authorizing the borrowing of four point zero-two-five million in providing for the issuance and sale of water systems revenue bonds, Series 2010. Mr. York?
Thank you, Mr. President. As city manager mentioned earlier in his presentation, we do have three resolutions on the agenda tonight for the purpose of authorizing utility revenue bonds for three capital improvement projects. They're in the budget for 2010. The first resolution is the authorization for a borrowing of four million twenty-five thousand dollars for water system revenue bonds for this year. And this particular project is to fund, or this particular financing is to fund a project to construct a new well in our water utility system. We have a well that has some production issues, and this will be a new well, a much deeper well, and also includes a reservoir for mixing of water between the well that we're replacing and the new well. If you don't mind, I'd probably just go ahead and
I think that would make some sense, and then if there are questions of you, or perhaps, I think I have one of Mr. Botts.
Right.
Why don't you go through all three?
Since they're all three related. The next resolution is authorizing a borrowing in our storm sewer system. We're required, in order to comply with Wisconsin DNR requirements, to construct a detention pond. The pond will be located in our golf course, and the one point four-seven million that we're proposing to borrow will be used to construct that facility. And lastly, we have a project in our sewer system. It's an expansion of our wastewater treatment plant for the purpose of processing the bio solids that the plant produces, as well as providing some odor control improvements to the sewage treatment plant. And this borrowing is for six million four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. The schedule for these bond issues, we have the water and the storm sewer bonds scheduled to be sold on March fifteenth. And the sewer system utility revenue bond is scheduled to be sold on April the fifth. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Dench?
Mr. York, first of all, thanks for the presentation. I want to point out with these three particular bond issues, they all relate to the utilities.
That's correct.
None of this would be lying on the tax roll.
That's correct. The debt service will be funded strictly from revenues from the various utility funds that we have.
So these three initiatives, at least, would have no impact on the tax levy in the future? Okay, thank you.
That also was essentially my question. Mr. York, could you briefly outline for the people watching and the people who may be here, revenue bonds versus general issue bonds, and the effect, and how that, how they're paid for?
The biggest difference is revenue bonds are funded solely from the revenues derived from the various utility operations. The general obligation bonds that the city typically issues for some of its capital projects are funded through the tax levy. We actually pledge the city's tax levy for the repayment of the debt service on the GEO bonds.
And then I would, if I could have a question of Mr. Botts, if I could ask him to step forward. And my question is particularly on eleven A and eleven B. Can you outline, at least briefly, why the need for these particular projects? And the well issue with nitrates and the combining, and the need to do that, and how that's the least expensive method to go forward? And also, then, the DNR requirements for forty percent solid reductions for the settling pond? Just so people understand why we're spending this kind of money.
As far as the wells, they have a level, we'll say contaminants that can be in the waters. And right now, with well that's up there on the north side of town, we're approaching that. And if you go over it, the DNR has the ability to shut that well down. And if we have that well shut down, it'll stress the other wells in the system. So through the research, one method of dealing with that is to blend the water. So you sink a deep well to blend the water with the shallow well, then you meet the standards. And also, with this project, then, you build a reservoir in order to blend this water in. What that reservoir gives us is about two-and-a-half million gallon capacity at the north end of town to use for fire flows. Be similar to adding two water tanks that could cross the street up there for water capacity to have up there to fight any fires, or provide just, you know, water to the system. So that's just kind of a two-pronged approach to dealing with that issue. But we'd hate to have a well shut down and then have to begin a process to make it active again, because that really puts a lot of strain on your current because that really puts a lot of strain on your current system. So, that's why we're doing it all now once. Where we've been touching up close to the exceedance level, and we don't want to get there and have it shut down and then have to respond to it. So, I think this is a proactive way to try to deal with it. As far as the stormwater system, we have a permit, we've been permitted by the state of Wisconsin to remove 40% of our total suspended solids in our stormwater outflow by the year 2013. With the construction of this pond, it'll get us up to 39%. We'll take other measures in our street sweeping, other things that we can do to get us that extra percent, so we'll meet our permit requirements. There are not a lot of communities in the state who are able to do this. I was at a public information, I guess, ability to make comment on the DNR's rule changes to the DNR last week, and trying to get those guys to relax some of these controls that they're putting on, but that probably won't happen, but it'll, they've been looking at ways to try to work with the communities to accomplish the required removal. But building these ponds, when we first looked at this, we had probably eight locations of ponds we'd have to build in order to meet this qualification. But after we got into the design of the ones in the golf course, we were able to meet a lot more standard than what we had originally realized. And plus, one thing, advantage is there, we don't have to buy the property, and that's a huge thing. Because if you have to go out and buy, you know, 10 acres of land to build a pond on, it doesn't really produce much revenue for you. So, we really took advantage of doing that, and we think it's a real good opportunity. Plus, it'll improve, it'll really enhance our golf course, and we'll market that to try to get more play out there and be able to continue to make this self-sustaining.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Botts. Well, this isn't going to be Frank Zuccarelli's pond again, is it?
Oh, these are, these would be nice, big ponds.
Okay. Additional councillor questions or comments? Ms. Alexander, do we need to have separate votes by roll-call votes on each?
You don't need roll-calls, you need separate votes.
Is it the next round that we need the roll-call votes?
We actually look into the need for roll-call votes, and there isn't one. It's just been historically done, but there's no statutory requirement for them.
I see. Okay, I just wanted to do it right here. All right, 11A is a resolution authorizing the borrowing of $4,025,000 in providing for issuance and sale of water system revenue bonds, Series 2010. Therefore, is there a motion to approve 11A?
Second.
Ms. DeForest, Mr. Haynes, any further councillor questions or discussion? And I'll call a question, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. 11B is a resolution authorizing the borrowing of $1,470,000 in providing for the issuance and sale of storm sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2010. Therefore, is there a motion to approve 11B? Mr. Noonam? And Mr. Dench? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. 11C is a resolution authorizing the borrowing of $6,475,000 in providing for the issuance and sale of sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2010. Therefore, is there a motion to approve 11C?
To approve?
Mr. Haynes and Ms. Johns. Any further councillor questions or discussion? And all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ms. DeForest and Mr. Levy, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.